Alright, everybody call this meeting, city council meeting today. To order will stand and do the flights. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll do the roll call, please.
Councilor Pearson.
Here.
Councilor Beagle.
Present.
Councilor Norton.
Yeah.
Councilor Drago.
Here.
Councilor Williams.
Here.
And Mayor Kiefer.
Here.
Councilor Prophet, or Council President Prophet is absent.
Correct, which will be an excused absence. We'll go to approval of minutes, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, city council public hearing.
I move to approve the minutes from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Chair of motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any question or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is this the? The Council President Prophet presided over that we're talking about?
Yes.
Then I need to make a request to change my vote on that amendment.
Oh, this was the one from February fifteenth, when we voted down was from March twenty-four.
Okay.
So.
Sorry?
No, that's okay.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Beagle?
It does. Do you have any other questions or concerns?
No.
Alright, we'll go to roll call, please.
Uh, Councilor Pearson.
Yes.
Councilor Beagle.
Approved.
Councilor Norton.
Yes.
Councilor Drago.
Yes.
Councilor Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Kiefer.
Yes. We'll move on to February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the city council regular meeting.
I think you got the date wrong.
No, there was, that day there was a regular meeting after the public hearing.
I, I don't have that on my agenda, sorry.
Approve the second February fifteen, Boardman City Council regular meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the city council regular meeting on February fifteenth, twenty, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion that we would like to have concerning that? Having hearing done, we'll go to a roll call, please.
Okay, Councilor Pearson.
Yes.
Councilor Beagle.
Approved.
Councilor Norton.
Yes.
Councilor Drago.
Yes.
Councilor Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Kiefer.
Yes. We'll now go to the approval of minutes, March first, two thousand twenty-two, city council regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the minutes for Boardman City Council regular meeting, March first, two thousand twenty-two.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March first, two thousand twenty-two, do I have a second? Okay, we have a second, is there any discussion anybody would like to have? Having hearing done, we'll go to a roll call, please.
Councilor Pearson.
Yes.
Councilor Beagle.
Approved.
Councilor Norton.
Yes.
Councilor Drago.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Kiefer.
Yes.
Financial report ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
In front of you is the one February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, you also will have the March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, we'll go over in a minute. We've got all the base statements in and ready for you in time for this meeting, it helps when it's not on the first of the month.
Yeah.
And so February was a good month, we got our, most of our franchise fees in that month and one of our larger property tax payments, that's why our general fund looks so large and unusual. I wanted to point that out, and then I want you to look at the interest rates at the bottom, left-hand side, and compare those to March, so we're starting to finally see them come up. One tenth of a percent for most of them, but that is a sign that we're starting to move in the right direction. So things are starting to stabilize a little bit more post-pandemic and this is a, a sign that across our base is starting to go up. And in the month of, for the financials, in the March thirty-first, our big one was the building fund, it was very busy with a lot of building permits and plan reviews. But everything else is just ordinary, so you can see that difference in those from February to March, since you have both of them at this meeting, you have that comparison.
So if I read this right, our building, our general fund is three million plus, is that correct, is that?
Yes, like over three million is what.
For my own personal, what is capital project fund?
That goes with our geo bond fund, the actual capital expenses are separate from the property taxes that come into payment that we distribute out, we have to keep those separate.
So on the four-ten?
For the expenses for those projects, the water and wastewater improvement, and the one million gallon reservoir, all those expenses will be shown in that fund.
So has money started going into that?
Yeah, we got all that money when we sold our geo bond.
Oh, that's right, okay, that's, that's where that money came from.
Yeah, and Fund five-ten is only our debt service fund, so that one will only account for the payments that we make towards our debt fund, towards our geo debt.
So four-ten, that amount money there is for our wastewater project?
Yes.
And if that runs out then, and we're not done, then we're in trouble, right?
Yeah, then we'd have to start looking like at our general reserve.
Copy, okay.
I move to approve the financial report ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Chair of motion, do I have a second?
So we, remember, we kind of.
Oh, that's right, we don't do that anymore, that's okay.
That's right, you just reviewed.
We're reviewing that, are there any questions about that? Apologize.
Mayor Kiefer, may I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes, you may.
Um, may I ask to have the electronic packet resent to me if that's an option, please, I'm afraid mine might not be complete.
Alright, Jen's on her way doing that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's gonna come from her account, she said.
Thank you.
Mine is gonna be incomplete as well.
Alright, she got it.
I don't know why we did that. Yeah, mine, mine was.
Alright, so we'll just move right along, does anybody have any questions concerning our financial reports?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, looking at item number three hundred, our general reserve fund, in the schematic up above, or the chart up above, it says we have two million four seventy-two, but down below in the budget, enter fund, transfer to, there's two million, what, what's the difference? And, and why is there a difference, I don't know, I just need to be educated.
Oh, so, um, like Mayor Kiefer had previously, you know, asked about Fund one hundred, so the, the numbers on the side is our funded numbers.
Right.
And so our general fund is where we collect all of our money and make all the payments. And this is also the fund where we budget to transfer money into our reserves, this is how we can put it into our savings. And Fund three hundred is our general reserve. And it had a prior balance, but this year we transferred in a total of two million three hundred forty-five thousand into our general reserve. And it came from different funds, not just our, uh, general fund, but that was the total that was transferred into it this year.
Okay.
So that two million three is the amount that's been put into it?
Yes, and it's already been moved over.
And line three hundred is what we have?
Yes.
The three million one sixty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
And most of our, both in that reserve and in our general fund, those big amounts have come a large part thanks to the CRES funding that we have received.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I guess I'd like to add, we have really worked hard because we haven't had that general fund reserve until the last couple of years. I mean, it's.
I think it's been about five years, but it started out very small.
Yeah, it's been a real goal to get some money over to that general fund reserve so that if we need to, we've got, we can do some extra work. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's my question. That's my question.
We have a, we don't have any prearranged public comment?
You're on tour.
Alright. Just a quick recap, just thank you to everybody that joined us for the Ryan and Memorial Golf Scholarship Tournament. Uh, we had twenty-three teams compete, um, on a nine-horse, nine-hole course. Um, Team Bartlett came in at a score of twenty-one to win the tournament. Um, it was a great day, just kind of remembering Ryan, um, if you weren't in attendance, we put Ryan's clubs out by the five hole and just to remember him while we were all playing and stuff like that, it was great, we, uh, you'll see the chamber posted a bunch of pictures with people around those clubs, so those, those clubs were Ryan's clubs, so. Um, just thank you again to everybody. And then the Seamar Citizens Awards banquet was held on March twelfth, uh, we had a hundred, a little over, about around a hundred and thirty people attend, I think is what I counted. And we recognized our twenty-twenty-one award recipients, and then we rattled off fifteen experience-focused centerpieces to raise money for our Chamber Scholarship as well, we will be giving away probably right around, um, about eighteen thousand dollars in Chamber Scholarship due this year just from those two events, um, so we're excited about that. And I just gave you a list, um, of events that just the chambers, I mean, I won't vouch for all of them, but I would like to just point out a few of them on tomorrow night at six, and Monday night at six is our county commissioner forums. Um, please, this can be in-person and Zoom, so you can come and attend. Uh, once we get to the end of it, you are able to, um, ask questions from the audience, they will each hand, it will be answering those questions, um, similar like we do when we're on Zoom, um, or on the Chamber Live in the past, so we're able to meet in person. And so if you have concerns or want to ask questions, it'd be the time to come and attend in person, so.
Is that in the auditorium?
The Riverfront Center at the Port Office.
Oh, it's at the Port Office.
Yeah. Um, BCDA, we're looking to probably have our budget meeting probably next week, our schedules have been abundantly overfull. Uh, so this, they kind of get pushed back, but I can tell you that we've already allocated ninety thousand dollars on home buyers incentive for the year, uh, so things are moving along. Um, we're looking at a project scope of about one point nine million dollars to finish out uh, broadband across nine-seven-eight-one-eight, we'll be working that in chunks. Um, so we're excited about that, and then we'll just be meeting and discussing what are, uh, the rest of our projects look like for twenty-twenty-two. Um, and then as a stage scenario, you probably see some stuff going on. The Tesla is there and they're selling our eight charging stations currently, uh, we're looking to have a grand, a grand opening mid-May for those, and then ODOT, we just finished a contract with them, and they'll be putting in universal charging, charging stations, so we'll have sixteen stations or total, um, it's funny, Tesla jumped in and already put that on the map of people with Tesla first, and so if people drive around like, where's your charging station, I'm like, oh, they're right there. So, but it's great to see that people are just coming off the freeway and looking for our stations, the charging station, so that's exciting. Um, and then, uh, the Chamber Commerce did a tackle, um, project this year, it's a super sign, uh, it's out there on the patio going into the stage center, our old kiosk was off to the left way out of the way, now it's over on the front, right when you walk through the main walking area, from the main carpet area. It is an E Ink screen, it shows all the events that are happening in Boardman, it has Twitter accounts, we can also put the, the loops uh, schedule up there for transportation, we can do surveys, we can do anything and everything off of that, so it's open for the community to use, uh, we also have a spotlight on local news, and then we also have it geared towards um, energy, like the power company had an article on there the other day, we can gear it to towards whatever we want it to kind of like grab, we can change the analytics to meet what we want to be on that screen. On the other side of the screen, or on the side, we're gonna be having a map of Boardman with points of interest, so if people are leaving the stage center, they can see the points of interest and go find other places to stay within Boardman, so it's just kind of a tourism opportunity that we are doing there, so. Any other questions? It's not showing, I think it really.
It's all excited.
Or anyone else? It looks like you are it.
I know.
Is there anybody else online that has anything to invite to, for public comment?
Are these, are these students that are online?
That's what I was just gonna find out, did you, do you know who's online? So we, we need to find out who Nate G is, so if you could let us know who your first and last name, just for the record of who's online, as well as Jasmine?
Yeah, no problem, uh, I'm Nate Graham, we're from, uh, Red Light Junior High School, so, our graduation.
Thanks Nate, how about Jasmine? Jasmine, yes.
She's, she unmuted, unmuted.
You know, usually they attended in person.
Right.
And then the mayor signed their agenda, and they took it back to school, so that they proved that they.
Right, they attended the city council, I think there was something that they.
And so I don't know how we do it when they attend on Zoom.
Hey Nate, is there something that we need to do for you and, uh, for your schooling? As far as attending a city council meeting?
Uh, uh, no, I don't believe you have to do anything, we just have to take notes about the meeting, then write a short essay about what happened, and, uh, that usually is good.
Do you know who Jasmine is?
Um, the only senior I know who's Jasmine is Jasmine Lopez.
Okay, we're trying to figure out who she is, but, thank you, thank you Nate. So, see, moving right along, we don't have we don't have anything to tell, we'll go right to our police report.
Uh, everybody should have received a full statistics report for the March, uh, as you can see, our numbers are increasing and we are definitely feeling the pressure, um, people getting back to normal life. Um, and, uh, as I said in the past, I, I don't know that the police department actually felt the increase growth based on last two years of being shut down, but we're definitely feeling it now, and, and Karen's gonna probably talk a little bit later about that. But as you can see, we're, we're starting to see an increase, the officers are staying extremely busy. And aside from that, I don't have anything really else to report on the police department side. Uh, trying to answer the questions of Karen.
How's the training going for, uh, the replacement for you?
Um, that's been going for ten years, so.
No, I, I mean, that sounded really bad, but I mean.
He's a slow learner.
So to replace your, so my motion that you're trying to get.
So, so my management style has always been train my replacement, and so I have been doing that for the entire time that I've been here, uh, making sure that my staff have the ability to advance in their career and get the training that they need, so things are going good on that side, yeah, absolutely.
I guess I could ask another hard question for you, so when do you get to make your choice? Your decision?
Well, I.
Is it still too soon?
I, I think, I think that decision, uh, as well as the council's decision, uh, you guys have to make the final decision, so. Uh, we, we probably need to have discussion, but, um, I, I was thinking later towards the end of summer, uh, before we actually have that discussion with the council.
No, what I meant was on your intent on whether you were able to or not be able to, that's kind of what I was getting.
I'm, I'm able to do it because I'm doing it now, it's just, uh.
With, okay, so you're saying that your final decision on whether or not you would be able to do it is look more at the end of the summer?
Yeah, I think that would be an appropriate time to have those discussions with the council, and, and that, that will give you a better opportunity to review uh, my performance and, and of course, uh.
A recommendation.
His performance has been great, and.
There's a lot of time between now and the end of summer.
Yes, it could change.
See how ready he got, yeah, there's something there.
Well, I, you know, if it was up to Karen, I'd probably be in this position already, but, uh, there's just a lot to do and, and we are so busy right now, everything is going on. Um, it's, it's a great opportunity to learn and seek my feet in deep, and, and that has happened. Um, I'm excited about all this, the positive things that are going on, and we're finally, as Karen said, getting some, some good news. Um, so we're gonna be so busy in the next few months, it's, it's, it's fine, it, it's not even gonna be fun, I mean, everything just coming at once now, you know, we kind of had it planned a couple of years apart, and then all of a sudden, boom, they're all happening within the next two months, start, so.
So the meeting in August, I'll come back. With my question.
Well, yes, anyway.
Unless it comes earlier.
Any other questions?
No, not for me.
Uh, then I don't have anything further.
Any other questions about the police department? Building Department report. If it's right in here. Any questions about the building department?
I see an observation, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, February, March, we had more permits sold than tire mark count.
We're doing really well.
And word is not growing.
I don't know. See what our traffic counts.
Can you go south? I, that was something I should have said. Looks good. It does, it's exciting. Alright, public works department. We know when, uh, the asphalt plants open.
It should be soon, it's April now, yeah.
I'm gonna, the only reason I say that is, and I guess this is for Ralph, is, uh, that dip.
Asphalt plant is open.
Yeah. Now, are they, is, who's responsible for getting that fixed?
The contractor that like, say, we'll find out that that is.
Is there any standards that they have to meet and things?
City has standards for, for the prepare, and I believe that the time they did that, they didn't have no batch, that's like the.
Right, because of the weather.
Correct. So yes, they need to come back, they'll have to recut it, to widen it, and then patch it.
Because I know that's kind of been a big concern for a lot of people, and as, and as busy as our road is out there, that's a you might want to take another route, road, if you got a really nice.
Yeah, that rock you're getting in there, we're glad it's happening now because if you had passed it two months ago, you would have had that bump again.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
So are they only required to fix it one time?
I believe so.
Believe so, I mean, and then if it hopefully stays smooth, and if it settles and gets bad, then that will be, that would be our responsibility. Or is that kind of.
Forty, you should have had it protected in the first place.
Right. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you have a question? Yes, um, on one hundred eight Wilford, um, what's a setter, it's a term I'm not familiar with, replace setter on one ways. It's what holds the meter. You got your, your wire lines down three feet or four feet, that's what comes up like that, and then you put the meter in there, it's called the setter.
Okay, thank you.
Learn something. That's all I have.
Alright, so we are now. At the councils, does any, any counselors have anything they would like to share?
Oh, I thought.
Yes.
CNN.
Oh, that was on purpose. This better.
Well, in my notes, you know, I just wanted to just see how, that we really did have a lot of good news last week, that the corps said we could go ahead, and we sent off their package of signatures. And then the VPA said that we can do, they gave us permission to do their work, so all those are really good news for us, and, uh, Kettleson was here to do his, their traffic study.
It wasn't very long, they put it up Wednesday night, because I stopped and asked what he was doing when I drove by, it was kind of obvious he was putting up cameras, and then the next morning, he was still putting up cameras, and then they were gone like Friday. That seemed not very long.
No, it did, I agree, it didn't seem very long, so I'm anxious to see what they, what the results are. But, uh, yeah.
And that's a traffic study for, for Main Street.
Wilson, too. Cool. Columbia.
And, because I couldn't find him down on Columbia. Farther down, I only saw like, at the what is it, Boardman Avenue?
Well, and, and, and it wasn't just by camera, there were actually traffic counters, people.
Oh, I missed, there were people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I missed the people.
It's certain kind of unique.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and they kind of wanted us to put out our two, and I said, no, we can put out our two anytime. I want to know what you do, so. That's what, yeah. And, uh, like I said, we had our team search negotiation, we settled on a new contract for them, so that was a couple of long days, a little bit, but it's, uh, so, um.
That was with you?
Huh?
Did he with you?
Yeah. Yeah, they made a brick and I, and then we hire a professional.
Labor attorney.
Uh, labor attorney. And then they have, uh. They have two people and then two employees. So. And, and the employees, you know, they hear things that. They never hear and. I think they're a little bit of a disadvantage, you know, with this. We work with the figures all the time. You know what I'm saying? And I'm sure that that union rep has figured out some figures. I mean, he works with figures every place he goes. So I think that, uh, maybe the, the employees, you know, it's, it's a learning curve for them. So it's good. Uh, we received, uh. And I gave, uh, the mayor his copy, uh, of the Luba from Kelleton. They're going to send our, uh, last zoning permit that we just did the other night. They're going to send it on to Luba, so. And I don't know how it will fit in that schedule, but I'm hoping that we can have just one meeting a month. Like we said, when we had to run for these offices, that we're kind of easing up on all these extra meetings. Uh, as the chief said, in our police department, we're just starting to be overwhelmed with calls for service. So we posted today for a lateral position, which means someone that is already trained. We don't want someone to, that we have to send off to the academy and stuff. So we'll see if anyone applies. You did see that Oregon is going to give up the sheriff's, uh. Their contract with the sheriff.
I did see that. I just read the public, uh. What else? Yeah, the press release from Chief Matt, I read that.
Yeah, so, so they're.
Sure. Sure.
We are different, please.
The correct term is, is sheriff, Matt.
Yes.
Well, and with that Luba, uh. Filing, I guess I wanted to make sure that, uh, you were aware and understood that in that, in that meeting the other night. When we had that public hearing. That the attorney said that, uh, when the UEC went through to the PUC committee. And they got the okay to move forward, that UEC had to put money into an escrow account. And that Thomas had taken the money out of the escrow account. So that appears that they have been paid something for the value of that easement. And I, I just think that that needs to be, people need to understand that there was a money exchange there. Whether they think it was, was enough or not, that's. That's a different story, but, but, uh. So that everybody understands that. And hopefully, we aren't, we don't do those things, but, so.
Uh, on that topic, if you haven't seen, uh, UEC, their contractor has moved on to the Tomlin property.
I saw that, I drove that, that tonight before I came here. It was, uh, I didn't know it was Tomlin, but I saw their trailer there and they're starting to build out there.
Yeah, yeah, they, they started, I believe, last week and. We're moving along in that process, so.
Are they, when are they allowed to build on the property? Or do they have permission to build on the property? Or do they wait?
I, I think they're gonna erect their towers, if that's part of what they're doing right now. Uh, but I don't, other than their towers, I don't know what else they would be doing on the property. I know that they'll be.
Cause that was the whole issue, was the towers on the property, is that correct? With UEC.
The right, yes.
I think Jim laid at your desk perhaps, or maybe only at my desk. You, okay, to see if, uh, any of you did want to attend. The mayor's conference this year is in Hermiston, which is.
Just not a real bad day.
Well, it's, it's really like.
I looked at the agenda too and it was like. Yeah, I just was like, hmm.
I have to say, I think you always learn something and if not, not, if nothing at all, you learn. The contacts and that's always pretty valuable. But anyway, we just wanted to make sure that none of you that haven't signed up, or let us know if you're wanting to go or not. Where's the last date? Oh, okay.
I did talk to, uh. Oh, my brother Nate, well, the, the city person who's in charge who did the conference I went to last year. And I did win or was awarded and a grant to go. But I was gonna go to this, the, the one that's in, uh. Fall, I think it's the fall. No, I was gonna try to go to that one, but it's the one on the coast.
Oh.
Which is the mayor's one that was.
I went to, uh, Saturday, oh. Well, now that I've always said I went somewhere on Saturday. I, I went over and, uh, Bessie Johnson was, is running for governor. So they had a meeting in Hermiston and I went there. And today I went to, uh, Hepner. AWS would add a meet and greet to their, have, having, they have a. Money that we can apply for different organizations and stuff. And so they're had a meeting to let us know that they have two hundred thousand dollars to disperse in grants. If you have an organization or something that needs some money, you should think about applying.
Anybody have any questions for city manager?
I have a question. Is, uh, Barry's fuel this Friday? Is this Friday, we'll, I'm sorry, I'm glad you mentioned that. I was very good, forget. Is this Friday we'll post city hall at noon? And, uh, service starts at two at the Port Riverfront Center. And then they'll have like an open house or whatever.
Is it like a celebration or have they already kind of done all the?
That's all my favorite for the most part.
Yes, I think.
So it's just, uh, we're kind of like a, so a celebration where the community can kind of get together.
I'm smart. Um, I'd also like to say that on May seventh, uh, Gary and Kathy are inviting everybody to Mark forty. For Ryan's memorial service and that's on the seventh, so that's a Saturday. I will be posting some more information on our, on our social media service and other things that details on that.
Go ahead, will you send the details?
Yeah.
Thank you. That reminded me is that, uh. I know we talked earlier about doing something for Barry. Uh, I know his sister asked me again if there was something that he, I don't know if she's been in contact with you. About doing something. For him. For the, I sort of remember, I don't know if it's the right way as a. We're not the right word, but I'm in honor of him for the amount of years and buddy's death. In Boardman, whether it be a park bench, whether it be whatever it may be. I know that she was. She mentioned that to me and I know that we had talked about something, trying to figure out if there's something that we could do for him.
I have an idea, I haven't talked to the family. I'm sure they would be happy with whatever my ideas.
I just wanted to bring that in.
Yeah, no, I think, I think.
If you have an idea, then that, that's all really all I was.
Well, and I think that, I think we probably can talk about it, you know, maybe have a little committee or something. So that we can.
I think that'd be really nice. And even if it was just the, the office staff that wanted to get together and talk, hey, what do we want to do? What do we want to? How do we want to, uh, honor this guy? To be able to, for whatever people's feelings are, to be able to, anybody that puts that amount of service and time. In a job in a community, there needs to be something pretty cool for.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's better than the gold watch.
Well, he won't be able to use it. Any counselor, counselor, uh, comments? As I, I just go down to the mayor comment. I was noticing that when I drove, I drove down Ripley Road. And I got to thinking, Ripley Road is in the county, is that correct?
Thank goodness.
And I was driving down the road and luckily I was in a suburban that kind of had some shops in it. But I was going down that road and I saw the, the towers and. So I guess my question is, the. Ever, the county had to have permission, give permission for those to be. Did the county have to give permission to have those tower or just the landowners?
They had it, oh, sorry.
Well, I don't. But UEC had to get permission from all those landowners, just like everybody else for that easement. And they, you know, like Shucks, are you familiar with that place? Because it's different looking now that they're going through there. Yeah, he was hard to find, but they found him and he made a deal with them. Yeah, and all those people had to.
Cause they didn't have to file anything with the county as far as having permission to build through a county, just the landowners?
Yes, this isn't a county, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I suppose they might have had a county, uh. Permit. You know, like our zoning permit. I'm sure they probably did.
I'm sure.
I was just kind of curious. Um, the other question I have is, so UEC is replacing power poles, right? Here's on a, on a road there, they put that notice. Do we know what the power poles are gonna look like? Are they the same poles or they bigger poles? Are they gonna be holding more power?
No, they're gonna be five feet taller, that's the only thing I know. I don't know if they're gonna be wooden. I guess I never asked.
They're not gonna be the big monster things.
No, 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 these are, these are residential. Yeah, this is, yeah, that's really, that's really, really big power.
Correct.
This is just.
And I, and we, I know they were saying that, but I was just like, what? So they are five feet taller and they're just updating their, their poles system?
But when you speak about Ripley Road, because I went out there the other day and I'm thinking, I'm really glad that's not a city street. That's, yeah.
That would be a pretty important road to fix because it's pretty, it's. It's, it's been, it's been patched over and over, so. All right, anybody else have anything? All right, I hereby adjourn this meeting.